Certain property east of County Road 57, West Gateway Drive. That for a change, if I could have a motion.
Move to approve the agenda with the change, H2 after E2.
Second.
Okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Both same side, motions carried. I will move on to the consent agendas. We've got city council minutes, special city council minute meeting, meeting, many, meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2002, regular city council meeting minutes of February 27th, 2023. We've got minutes of boards and commissions, planning commission meeting minutes of March 7th, 2023, water and life commission meeting minutes of March 6th, 2023, LEC joint powers board meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2023, safe roads coalition meeting minutes of February 38, 2023, economic development authority meeting minutes of February 27th, 2023, and feels payable. Case items as well? Okay. We also have case items, seasonal renewal, on sale application, Nobles County Fair Association in Worthington Speedway, and renewal applications for onsite application Worthington area youth baseball association along with the table. But motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to second it, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carried. Okay, on to city council business, case item number one. City request to address city council regarding amendment ordinance 90.03B domesticated animals.
All right, thanks Mayor. The above ordinance prohibits keeping, maintaining, or harboring a variety of animals, including chickens. Staff has received a request to address city council from a citizen to advocate amending subsection eight of the ordinance to remove chickens from the list of prohibited species. Attached in your packet was, as exhibit three, was portions of chapter 90.03 of the general regulations of the code of ordinances that gives a little bit of the history of the guidelines of animals that are prohibited. And Mr. Vetch is here and would like to address, address the council on his request to amend or remove chickens from the prohibited list.
Thank you. Well, first of all, my name is Tony Vetch. I've been a resident of Worthington since about 2007. I live here with my wife and our almost three-year-old daughter. I work in the Worthington area out of the Rock Nobles Community Corrections Probation Office out at the Prairie Justice Center. My proposal today is to ask the city council to consider voting on, if that's the proper procedure, in allowing citizens within city limits to be able to raise a certain number of chickens. As we all know, the rising price of goods, including groceries, has reached historical levels over the last several years with the rise of inflation. Chick, or egg prices have averaged out at about $4.25 a dozen. That's up from a prior year of $1.79 a dozen. Eggs are a great source of protein and are staple meal for many people. I myself like to be as self-sufficient as possible. My wife and I have taken up gardening, and over the last several years, we have increased our garden size each year that we've done that, so. There's, through my research, I've seen that there's a lot of cities, many cities that are much larger than Worthington, that do allow for chickens to be raised within city limits, and I'm going to outline some of those cities and some of their policies right now. One city, much larger than Worthington, Minnesota, is Minneapolis. Minneapolis does have a policy to allow their citizens to raise chickens within city limits. Some of the regulations that they do have are permitting requirement. They do allow in residential coops up to six hens. It is pretty standard not to allow any roosters for obvious reasons with noise. Coops are often required to be in the rear of the property so that they can't be seen from the front of the property or from the street. And then there's also some odor control with manure issues, and they can't create a nuisance to surrounding neighbors. Some other cities that do allow that are, again, much larger than Worthington, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, does have a policy in place to allow chickens, up to six chickens without a permit, and if you want more than six chickens, there is a permitting process, and that also carries written approval from any of the neighbors. My wife and I visited Portland, Oregon, a number of years ago, again, a much larger city than Worthington, and they also do allow for citizens to raise chickens, and then they have a number of regulations that they have as well. Some other cities that I found in Minnesota, the list is quite long, Folde, Adrian, Anoka, Burnsville, Cottage Grove, Duluth, Eagan, Farmington, so on and so forth. There's quite a few cities in the metropolitan area that do allow chickens to be raised within city limits. I like to compare chickens to people that have pets. I'm not a dog person, and we don't have any other pets, but maybe a chicken could be a pet. I compare them to folks that have dogs. Dogs can be noisy. Oftentimes in the summer, I can hear barking dogs throughout the neighborhood, and this can go on for hours at a time. Dogs can be messy. I've been to the parks in town and almost stepped in feces from dogs. I've had dogs defecate in my yard. These are things that chickens wouldn't do if they're penned up, if they're in the rear of the property. So if we're comparing chickens to dogs, dogs are allowed, chickens aren't. To me, dogs can create many more problems than, than chickens do. Another thing, I believe that the city does have enforcement capabilities. We do have community service officer, and I believe that does include animal control if there ever would be an issue. I think there's already, actually, I do know that there are people in the city limits that are already engaging in these practices. I don't think it's something that we necessarily need to advertise if we do allow it. Maybe there won't be much interest, maybe there will, who knows? But if I would be able to propose, my final proposal would be that the city could allow up to six hens, no roosters, and up to 10 hens with a neighbor approval, in a pen in the rear of the property so that they can't be seen from the street. Chickens cannot be loose on the yard, they have to be in a penned cage. They must not cause a nuisance to the neighbors, and that would include smell. And then I would also propose that there would not be a permitting fee. I think we want to make it as easy as possible. I mean, this should be a cost-effective thing, and we don't want overregulation either. So I would propose that there's not a permitting fee, but maybe a permitting-type process. That is all I have. I would hope that you guys could take this under consideration, and I've never been through this process before, I don't know if you guys have to discuss it and then take a vote, but that is my proposal this afternoon.
Counsel, any questions?
I don't know that I would say I'd be prepared to vote today. I'd like to look into it a little bit more with the request, that I don't know that there's anything that I would say would make me vote for it or necessarily against it right now, but I think in due diligence, I need to hear from other people. As much as you can say, I don't think we should advertise it. We have a couple sources of media here, it's going to get its due time.
Good point, good point.
Now people will know. That's going to happen, so I think then we'll hear some feedback. Questions, calls, concerns? We'll see what plucks up.
Mr. Vetch, I appreciate you, you answered many of the questions I was prepared to bring forward regarding size and pen and, and thing like that. So I appreciate the research that you have provided for us, just as for your information and as council understands, the process that we would go through, it's a change of ordinance, so we would have to make the written changes to the ordinance to be presented to the city council, and then it goes through three separate readings. So at three separate council meetings, it would go through, and then if it passes all three readings, it gets published in the newspaper, and once it's published, then it officially becomes effective. So it's roughly a two-month process after council approves that they want to move forward with it. And if council directs, staff can certainly put together a memo, much like you've, you've done, based on our own research, and if council is interested in us looking into it further. Appreciate having a copy of the list that you've already started on your own research, so that would certainly streamline the, the process.
Yeah, and I could provide that if, if, you know, there's an email address I could send it to, maybe I can contact the city, city office tomorrow and send that. Sure.
So.
In your research, is there a magic number as far as whether it's three, six, 10, 15?
Yeah, from my research, it seems like the average is right around the five to seven. There are some jurisdictions that allow for larger numbers depending on the size of the property, but then there's extra regulations involved with that as well, so. But yeah, I would, I would say the average is right around six or so.
And we'll do some research too, but in, in your research, did, do they address issues such as what to do with, with the, with the litter, you know, with the, with the feces of the, like the chicken from the chicken coop? Do they restrict its, you know, putting in them, in the main garb, in your typical garbage can, or do they, how to dispose of?
I guess, I, I don't recall seeing much of that information in my research myself. I would throw it in my garden and use it as, you know, compost and stuff, but no, I, I'm sorry, I can't speak to that, so.
I would say one of the things I'd be maybe more concerned about, I don't want to say more, so I take that back. It's not more concern, it's, some concern is what constitutes a coop, you know?
Yeah, right.
Can I throw a dog kennel back there and say, oh, I got a coop? You know, I, I, that's why I think we need a little time to just make sure what other cities, communities have, what's a coop, what's another garage, what's, you know, there's different things on there, and as far as structures, I mean, if you want to put a storage shed up, you have to make sure you don't have too many things, you know, on impervious cover, you know, things like that on a lot, that I think this needs to be looked at too in relation to not just the birds being something not of the norm. I think the coop or the structure needs to be addressed as well, and, and that, while you said, yes, many have an ordinance that say you can do it, how many of them regulate or restrict or limit the size or the lack of size of a coop? Because I can just throw a bunch of chickens in my yard and put a chicken fence up.
Right, yep.
That doesn't do a whole lot either, and does that entice the neighbor's dog who is behind the fence, maybe to jump the fence and have some chicken? That nobody really wants, so I guess there's, the coop part is what I really want to take a little dive into.
Yeah, reasonable concern, yeah, absolutely.
Your answer, Mike.
Okay, yeah, I was like.
And do they have certain areas in, you know, it's not citywide, they might have just certain areas that they allow that as well?
Yeah, I, again, I, I can't speak to that specifically, but in fact, in Portland, I saw chickens in the front yards of residences, so they don't even have restriction as, as far as the front or backyard, but, but yeah, so. Anyway, I appreciate you guys allowing me to come and speak, and look forward to hearing a little bit more about this, so, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on that?
No, I would, I would just request that staff look into some of the other communities and some of their restrictions, coop and bird numbers. Get back to us.
Okay, we'll have a further discussion. On to the application for new off-sale beer license, Corky's Corner.
Okay, included as exhibit four is an application for a new off-sale beer license that was submitted by Corky's Corner at 1007 Oxford Street. All the required paperwork has been received and a successful background check has been completed. The license period, if approved, would be from March 15th to December 31st of 2023. Council action is requested on the application for the new off-sale beer license submitted by Corky's Corner.
Does a business change ownership on the 15th, or has it already, has it?
As far as I know, it, it will be.
I believe they're closing on the 23rd, maybe? Is what they told me?
They did not tell me that. We can adjust, what, the?
Because can there be, can there be two on one location at one time?
No.
And that would be my concern, is that if we do one for the 15th?
Right.
And they don't close until X, are we?
We have to, we can change the date of when they take effect.
Okay.
License, but we do it by month, so I can't.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Do it by date, but I can change, it wouldn't go into effect until they actually close, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Any personnel here from Corky's Corner? Any other discussion?
So are we, well? If we didn't do anything now, then they, then it would be too late.
Yeah.
If they did close and take over.
It's a tangent on.
The successful closing?
When they have a successful closing, yeah.
There. I'd, I'd make that motion, and I would make the motion not to go forward with it until a proper close, verified close of business ownership has changed hands and legally been recorded before approving.
You have a motion, you have a second.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion's carried. On to H2, conditional use permit, certain property east of County Road 57, West Gateway Drive.
Yep, thank you Mayor. So this is a conditional use permit for a brand-new church here. So the Worthington Corinne Baptist Church has submitted a request to utilize property located along the north-south segment of West Gateway Drive, County Road 57, to construct and operate a church. The subject property is currently zoned B3 general business district, and religious land uses in that district are permitted by conditional use permit only. At its March 7th, 2023 meeting, the city planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the requested conditional use permit, subject to three conditions. One is the, any exterior trash storage must be screened in accordance with city code section 15543. The applicant secures a driveway access permit from Nobles County, and the subject property must maintain compliance with all applicable local, state, and federal standards and requirements. Lastly, the commission did recommend maintaining a shared driveway as shown on the site plan in one of the exhibits there. That would be a shared driveway with the city's property to the south because we do own the surrounding property there. However, they elected not to include it as a condition of approval, and rather to leave that kind of up to the city as we finalize details with our construction permitting process, and then up to the county as well with their driveway access permitting process. Following that, you can see what their recommendation was based on there. I'll just touch on a couple things here. This property under consideration was actually previously owned by the city, and then it was sold to the Ethiopian Orthodox Church, I'm sure many of you remember that. At that time, a conditional use permit was issued for the construction of a new church, however, it was contingent on following the approved site plan at the time. Now, since they want to construct a church with a slightly different site plan, that's why this church is now back for this request before you today. Otherwise, you can see everything else there, and council has requested to consider approval or denial of the land use application, and you can do so by motion if you concur with the findings of the planning commission.
Counsel, any discussion?
I would ask Councilman Keel Block, who sits on the planning, I mean, any different concerns, I mean, other than, I mean, what was listed before on the previous agreement?
No, from, based on our discussion at planning commission, you know, they address parking issues, the building footprint is smaller, I think, than what originally was there with the Ethiopian church. It's a similar use to what it was approved for before, and it was pretty cut and dry.
Okay.
What was the reasoning for considering recommending a shared driveway?
Well, it was planned that way originally with the Ethiopian church.
Okay.
And so the, the initial plans that they had drawn up by incorporated that also. In discussions, we just kind of floated between whether that was actually needed for, and I mean, it kind of goes back to what the intent for the other parcels out there might be in the future.
With that being a county road, they like to restrict the driveway access points a lot more than on a normal city street.
Okay.
So the thinking is that that's planning ahead for the future, you know, to whoever we might sell our city property to, now they've got a shared driveway they can work off of without having to kind of go back and forth with the county on another access permit there, so.
Okay, any other discussion? Any, any from the church have anything to say?
Hi, Captain Coinford.
Yeah. No, good evening, everyone. My name is Hai from Corinne, Worthington Corinne Baptist Church, and I am a member of church, and also at the same time, I am the primary advisory for planning and developing. And yeah, when we're looking at this, it is kind of really necessary for us. We have been, the Corinne people have been here like about, not only Corinne people, but also other ethnics that are working with us from Asia, and we don't have any, kind of any things like to build like a church, we don't have any property like that yet, and we try to kind of struggling for now, and we kind of rent the church to worship together, but at the same time, it's, it's going to be like the same thing. If you had one vehicle with two owners, there's going to be a kind of little tough for us to do that, but it doesn't mean that we have a problem with the relationship, but it's also, it depends on the time and everything. Like I said previously, like if we need to do celebration like Christmas, New Year, or whatever, so there'll be two churches in the same building, so that's going to be kind of a little tough for us to do that. And the next thing is that most of our Corinne people in this, this city, they're homeowners, so they don't plan for just stay here temporarily. So they plan to live here longer than that, so we need something for our next generation, for ourselves, for, for our next generation to worship freely, to have something to do, like to sharing culture, or like do any celebration stuff. So we really need that, those kind of things. Or for now, we don't have any room like to practice, like, like let's say, practicing song, setting school, we don't have place, so we have to use our pastor's house, like imagine that, you're going to do drum, bass, all instrument in that household, so you don't want to do that for so long. And other than that, instead of buy a set of instrument, we have to buy two. One of them has to stay at church, the other one has to stay at home. So there's a kind of another deal that we have to face right now. So I, we think it is kind of better to have our own property, our own building, to store our instruments, and do whatever needed to be done for our children, and to worship freely in the future. So that way, the first amendment is working better for us a little bit, I think.
How many members do you currently have, approximately?
Approximately like 150 household for now, and yeah, so.
You currently meet where?
At First Covenant Church by Level 1.
Water?
Yeah, Level 1 water. But not all, all of us are here today.
Yep. There was considerably more at the planning commission meeting the other night. It was fun to see them all, yep.
Not, not all at that night either, because some of us, they're working at night, so just those.
Is this a big enough building for you, or is there room for expansion for the property that you have in the future that you're?
You mean the building that we are planning for now? I think that's be good enough for now, but if we need to expand it or make it bigger, we might have to come back and talk about that again, but it will take a while.
Lot size facilitates that. Very reasonable, I think, right now.
Counsel, any other questions?
I move to approve, based on planning commission's recommendations, I move to go forward.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and second. Any further discussion, otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move back to.
And our pastor requests if we take a picture.
Absolutely.
Can I say something?
Yeah. Introduce yourself, tell us your.
Yeah, my name is Abba Abetel from Ethiopian Orthodox Church. So I want to say thank you, you guys help them a lot for this community, because we have been struggling before, so the member we have, a council member we have, planning commission we have right now, I see on my eye to try to accommodate the diversity. That's the mentoring chat I remember, you are the reason, Emmy, Chris, and the mayor, Steve, all of you guys working hard beyond your expectation, you know, to make this thing happen for us and the Korean Baptist Church. That's what we want to see, you know? That makes us feeling we live in our home, so this is a great job, so I would, I would like to say thank you for you, you deserve it, that's why I want to say these few words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Come on, Susan.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, of course, yeah, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
My goodness, thanks for coming. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, no.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming.
Have a lot.
Sure.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Hey, thanks for showing up. Thanks for coming, you guys. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming today. Hi, thanks for coming. Nice to see you, thanks for coming. Hi, thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming today. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All done, right? Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
She's the pastor. She's the pastor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome.
Congratulations? Thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations. See you all over there. Nice to see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thank you. My goodness, thanks for coming. Thank you for coming. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming today. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Hi, thanks for coming.
Yeah, Todd or Ryan or somebody.
Thanks for coming.
I put it on, I put it on wide angle. I put it on wide angle because I had a good lunch today.
There we go.
For days in the back.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All done, right? Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Congratulations.
He's the pastor. She's the pastor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations. See you all over there. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't know that they were not. Yeah. I didn't really think of that.
See you later. Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to the council business. JBS Field.
Uh, good afternoon, mayor, council. Uh, we have the JBS Field House manager Cory Greenway here. He's going to give us an update on our current state of operations. Uh, so I'll turn it over to Cory and he'll take all your questions and, and tell you how things are going.
Hello, council. I'm really excited to be here again, provide you guys an update with where we've been at so far for the last seven months, uh, at the field house for when we've been open to the public. Originally, we started with having members from the community utilizing the space last winter, spring, beginning in March of 2022. And we officially opened to the public fully here on September, um, 6th. So we've been open now for a little over seven months. Um, pulling up some information here today, we've had over 6,000 daily users, not counting those people who have rented out the space for activity usage. Um, so we've gone back, looked at all of our day use users. Um, we've had over 250 field rentals and that's not counting anything with the school district or Minnesota West usage so far. So those are outside programs compared to those two that use it a lot. Um, a quick little update for the ice arena as well. Um, we've seen about 3,000 people for open skate and our family skate times only took over operation of that. Um, our daily, our current day fee revenue we've collected is about $32,000. We've collected nearly $58,000 in rental revenue for the field house. We've discounted over $13,000 for community programs for youth and adults to make the space more inviting, uh, and inclusive for the activities to make sure that our programs in town can afford to use the space. Uh, typical weekday, Monday through Friday, we have one field reserved from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, uh, to be used by the community, much like you'd go to a park and have a green space to utilize. Uh, after six o'clock is when we start renting out the whole field for programs and activities. On Saturdays, we have that same space, uh, open from 8:00 AM till 3:00 PM. And as of March 12th, we've collected a total of nearly $109,000, uh, for total revenue between the field house and ice arena. Um, some of the programs that we've had take place so far are MYFL equipment handout and returns, the semi-pro soccer teams practicing there, uh, WABA baseball clinics registrations and practices, men's indoor soccer league, Minnesota West baseball, softball, football, uh, ISD 518 baseball, softball, golf, football, uh, Central Line football team came up here and practiced when they made it to the state championships, uh, here last fall. The Worthington United Soccer Group, countless birthday parties so far, so far, uh, various church groups, YMCA soccer program. We've had a couple of daycare outings partnered with the Southwest Initiative Foundation. We'll be coming back to the space in April. Um, open community golf time, batting cage time, soccer time, family field time, where we try and be more inclusive for families, young kids to come use the space and don't let people rent it so they have a space to use it. Um, and some of the things we have planned for next year include, uh, 21 and older nights partnered with liquor store, um, adjusting our batting cage and golf nights for different times to accommodate more people, possibly hosting a cornhole tournament, a New Year's Eve event for families of young children and toddlers, um, because obviously kids don't want to stay up till midnight and parents don't want to let that lady there. Um, provide a high school soccer tournament for our community and bring new program opportunities like field house lacrosse, disc golf, uh, disc golf, putting league, ultimate frisbee to the community as well, as well as get more groups and organizations involved in using the field house space. Um, along with that, we have heard good, some, some very positive feedback from our community as well as some suggestions to make it, uh, more inclusive or provide more time for families that are going to use the space that find it, um, being utilized maybe more than we initially thought or than they would have thought too. So we'll look to adjust some of our reserved community time to make sure that green space is available for families. Um, one big goal we had kind of starting out with this for myself was that we'd kind of see how things naturally flowed the first couple of months during our busy season for quarters four and one. And now that we've seen that, we can do some better planning for next year to accommodate that increased usage and capacity. So, uh, with that, would you guys have any questions for me?
Chad, what would you say is the biggest, oh, we should have done that? I know you've, you've run into several things. What would be the one thing as the manager that you would say, oh, we should have done this?
Locker rooms.
Okay.
Well, I think locker rooms would be a good addition, especially starting out for, even for youth players and adults of various teams and stuff like that. Um, not everybody comes changed. Uh, we're able to pull off their pants and have their shorts or something on right away. Uh, with the bathrooms, they are there, but with only a couple of stalls in each one, um, we did have some issues early on of people changing in the open seating space, um, which if you have families and kids around is not ideal. So we tried to correct that quickly. Um, other than that, I think, you know, like everything, it could always build, be, be built bigger, but with the space and structure that we had, I think we're doing great with what we have for it. And we haven't, I wouldn't say that we've outgrown it. We were really looking to better accommodate the usage to make it more efficient.
What about for storage? Are you guys like at the brims right now with, with everything or?
Not right now. Um, the storage area we have is really accommodating a lot of our equipment. Um, the cleaning spaces have been appropriate for what we have as far as keeping inventory for toilet trees, cleaning products, stuff like that. Um, our tables and chairs are stored away. They're still visible, but there's an open storage space under the stairs we're able to use. Um, if we go look to add more things, um, we did have some people come and try playing tennis, which can be done in the field. Um, if we get some portable stanchions to provide a tennis net across the field, those would take up more space in the storage area. Um, really the big thing are the soccer goals are just big, they're six feet by 12 feet. Um, so those are stored along the walls, but if at some point we ever needed to move them all into the storage area, we'd probably run pretty short on it. But between the golf mats, equipment, baseball machines, pitching machines, the gas powered vacuum to clean it all, uh, we have adequate storage for now.
Have you been happy with the quality of the turf and the workmanship of everything that's been done so far? Have we had anything fail on us?
We have a couple of issues with.
To be really fixed?
Yeah, well, the only really issue we've had is with our lighting, um, which we're going through a process of that. We've had several lights fail on us, which they're going back and starting to replace. Uh, there's a little more work, work involved with that, with the netting system that is hung up and suspended below it. Uh, so to remove the netting or replace lights is a little more tedious and labor intensive than originally thought, but, um, all in all, we had a couple of things pop up with some water early on, but the roof wasn't finished on the front office space. Um, all the doors have been buttoned up now, so we were missing some bug guards for a little bit. So a couple of things of snow were blowing in, but that's been solved. Um, so far, it seems like a lot of our growing pains for the spring, summer, fall of last year, we've survived. Um, we'll see what this spring has, but everything so far is looking pretty good with that. Those warm days we had, we didn't really have any water damage, uh, coming anywhere yet. So hope that continues.
Have you had any issues of, um, um, users abusing the facility or really respecting the space that they're using?
So far, it's been really good. Um, the groups that we have had in there, we've made sure to talk to. Um, everyone that is renting the space for a program, we have a agreement or rental agreement leased for, um, outlining our rules and specifications where we can cancel their use of the space for numerous reasons, but one of that is the respect and cleanliness of the facility while, after they are done using it or during it. Um, I think we do a pretty good job maintaining the trash load that's in there right now, but so far, um, outside of the occasional water bottles and some larger events, we've been able to clean up pretty well. There hasn't been any serious damage, um, done by people other than some bolts breaking here and there on the equipment, which is just wear and tear on it, which is going to happen. Um, and then just trying to, the, the tough thing that we've found is not that you can contain children ever, but when we do have some groups come in that take and rent the field and those kids get relocated out to the playground side, it's harder to go from kicking a ball or throwing a ball in a big open space to now having the playground space with people sitting around in tables and chairs, uh, and our drop ceiling with tiles in there. So we've had a couple of holes get knocked out. Um, so just making our staff aware of that, telling patrons to not throw kick balls out there that could damage something, kick off a sprinkler head, uh, cause some damage that way too. So, and it's a lot of it just education for people, I think, in the first year. And for the most part, once we've had those conversations, they've been very receptive and we haven't had too many more issues with those individuals.
Um, have you guys looked at any proposals for maybe an annual fee instead of?
Um, so I have a couple of ideas on it. I think we'll continue talking about it here now that we've gone through this year. Um, and we've seen kind of what our user load has looked like, um, especially with the addition of, if we continue operation of the ice arena, um, we could include that into a city recreation fee of some sort for the field house and the ice arena and include open skate or family skate and your skate rentals. Um, and then another conversation to have is if that somehow gets included into that outdoor pool and stuff like that also. So there's a lot of things that could be done, but I think for sure by this fall, we'll have a field house pass figured out annually. Like we've done monthly payments for a one-time fee.
Um, ice arena.
Um, you know, taking it over is a little last minute, so it's a bit of a, a change from what I was expecting, uh, but I think we've done pretty positive things with it so far. There's a couple of issues that have popped up, which is going to happen with a building of that age, um, and maintenance need that we were able to take care of and fix with some additional help with the association for a couple of things. Um, but I think it's been a positive experience and there's definitely some opportunities to look at next year's lease agreement to allocate the city more time to provide more opportunities for the community. Again, part of that with it being so late, not knowing maybe what we're getting into, this winter was a great kind of feeling opportunity to see what we can help assist them with to streamline some efficiencies as far as scheduling our practices and times to help improve their program and also make sure we're making it an asset, uh, an amenity for the community with the city being in operation of it. Um, to me, I think having the city operate the facility but not have enough community time is a bit of a, a tough thing to continue to do.
A couple of things, Cory, um, or that I'll bring up. Do you have the numbers from January 1st as far as, uh, revenues for the field house? From January 1st till now?
Um, no, I don't. I can tell you that from February, the total month of February, we took in about $25,000 in rental fees for the month of February. That was our busiest month so far.
And, and for council's information, I think we budgeted $80,000 in total revenues for the year was what's our budget. So I know last fall, we were, we did really well. Uh, the other thing I want to say, um, first of all, Cory and his staff do a wonderful job. Um, but we have some ideas for that arena on the non-ice time, um, that we think we can really promote and get some revenue that, uh, they weren't able to. Uh, we're working on some things, but yeah, Cory and his staff have done a wonderful job. I couldn't ask for a better manager.
When does, was it September or October that we went into that agreement or when did we have to renew and review?
I think officially it started October 1st, if I remember right.
Okay.
Yep. And then their lease of the time for the ice, the ice comes out here on March 25th, um, is the end of the ice for them. And they still can use the facility, so they've kind of talked to me about a couple of dry land times in the summertime as well. We've also offered up the field house in the summertime to do that, um, to utilize that space, especially given with our lacrosse and field hockey equipment. The fee for usage comes out to be about the same. So if you could utilize a, in my opinion, a better space that's air conditioned and not a slick cement floor, that might be better to utilize some other activities for than being there where it's not heated or cooled and humid and sticky, so.
Right.
But yeah, we have a lot of, I think, good opportunities for that space as well.
Yeah, I believe we took over, we leased it on October 1st or we talked about it in September, took it over in October and they wanted ice then.
October 16th.
Yes, so we had very little time. Uh, one other thing I will say, I was contacted by, we had the district tournament out there last week for girls, 12 and under, and I was contacted by the district, um, president or the head of the district, and he wanted to commend us on the building. Uh, it was such a change from last year. Um, he was impressed by the cleanliness and the operations and so, once again, that credit all goes to Cory and his staff, but we're hearing good things, so.
Cory, anybody else have anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to District 518 ball field maintenance agreement.
Uh, the city of Worthington currently leases from the Worthington School District 518, the middle school baseball complex. Uh, the public works department maintains and schedules all activities for these fields. Uh, these duties include, um, and I just put a couple down, field maintenance, uh, cleaning and trash removal, and then minor maintenance of the facilities. Uh, the proposed fee that District 518 will pay the city of Worthington is $10,600 and that's a 5% increase from 2022. Uh, copy of the agreement is exhibit one in your packet and council action is requested to approve the agreement with District 518.
The 5% increase should cover our increased employment costs, correct?
Yeah, basically.
Okay.
And, and yeah, our, our seasonals, uh, will be the same price as last year, so it's just basically our full-time persons increase and then, you know, field prices are about the same and equipment we have. And, uh, this is just one portion of our whole ball field agreement. You'll be seeing something from Minnesota West and WABA pays us a fee and the Cubs pay us a fee, so, and softball pays, so it's just not just this.
Okay.
Anybody else have any question?
I'd move to approve.
Motion, second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion's carried.
Uh, number three is the, uh, field house phase one change order. Uh, this is the final change order for phase one of our field house construction. Uh, Tri-State General Contracting has projected, has subject, submitted a phase one change order included as exhibit two in your packet. Uh, included in this change order is to provide additional card readers and cameras, provide additional electric for batting cages, uh, relocate the fire strobes and horns, uh, relocate netting switches, add additional wires, wireless points, and this total change order would come to $19,294.73. Uh, these articles, the articles in this change order were reviewed and approved by an architect on the project. Uh, this change order is an increase of $19,294.73, uh, in total, increasing our total contract price to $1,898,260.50. Council action is requested to approve the change order for phase one. Um, I will just add that most of these things in this change order were things that we were on separate contracts, like the batting cages and stuff like that. So we didn't know where this was and what it is, is we just hired, uh, Tri-State's electricians while they're on site to do these upgrades, uh, rather than us bringing in a different electrician. Uh, so a lot of this stuff is, um, additional wireless points and stuff, is stuff that was brought up by the city. It wasn't really changes on their part. It was just us having them do that.
Any discussion, council, questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second, uh, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign?[1706.63]
provide additional electric for batting cages, relocate the fire strobes and horns, relocate netting switches, add additional wires, wireless points. And this total change order would come to $19,294.73. These articles, the articles in this change order were reviewed and approved by an architect on the project. This change order is an increase of $19,294.73, in total, increasing our total contract price to $1,898,260.50. Council action is requested to approve the change order for Phase 1. I will just add that most of these things in this change order were things that we were on separate contracts, like the batting cages and stuff like that. So we didn't know where this was. And what it is, is we just hired Tri-State's electricians while they're on site to do these upgrades rather than us bringing in a different electrician. So a lot of this stuff is additional wireless points and stuff, is stuff that was brought up by the city. It wasn't really changes on their part. It was just us having them do that.
Any discussion, council, questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign? Opposed, same sign? Motion's carried.
The last one is a Phase 2 change order on our fieldhouse. Tri-State General Contracting submitted a Phase 2 change order, final change order, included as Exhibit 3. This is to provide and install a sub-slab vapor system, additional exterior lighting, provide electric to our exterior sign, enclosed area underneath the stairs for storage, reposition of some electrical outlets, run fiber line conduit to the office, and then soil correction work. Total change order of $45,979.03, increasing our total contract price to $2,498,815.09. Council action is requested to approve the Phase 2 change order. The big one was for soil correction work, and that was brought on by Braun. There was, when they got digging into the parking lot, they came up with some soil that they weren't real happy with. So we had to do some soil correction work.
Have any funds been allocated or will that be a separate change order for landscaping in the front of the building?
You mean around the sign and that?
Yeah, or is there anything, I guess, like towards that? The entrance that was utilized at first that goes straight into the gym?
Yep. No, we'll do that with a separate contract. We'll just hire somebody to do. We got to landscape around the sign and stuff. This is the final change order for Tri-State. And we wanted to make sure that all that stuff around the front settled and we knew what our sign was going to look like. And yeah, we're going to work on that all in the spring. We'll have to hire a contractor, try to find a contractor, come in there and do it if we don't do it wise, city-wise.
Right, okay.
Move to approve.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion's carried.
Thank you.
On to council business engineering. Will we make sure of certain city streets as part of a municipal state aid street system?
Yes. The municipal state aid street system is limited to 20% of our street mileage within the city limits. The city has banked 2.22 miles, which is available for designation. To receive state aid funding for these banked miles, they must be designated as part of the city street system. If it's in the bank, we don't get any additional state aid monies for those until we actually put them on the ground and identify which streets are on. The realignment of the MSAS system has been on hold since the reconstruction of Trunk Highway 60, and we've been waiting for the state to complete the turnback of the city streets impacted by the reconstruction. The Trunk Highway 60 reconstruction, along with other changes in the city street system, has resulted in traffic patterns changing. Those changes include the direct connection of County State Highway 35 to East Avenue at the roundabout on the south end of town. Grand Avenue has been completed from Oxford Street going up north to Darling Drive. It's by the new theater. And the 16th Street railroad crossing to the south has been closed off and you no longer have access from that part of town across railroad tracks to get down to Highway 60 to the south. Development has increased along Krailshime Road also, and redevelopment is happening along the Homestead Avenue north of Oxford Street now. The proposal is to extend the MSAS designate designation on West Lake from Thompson over, I'm sorry, from College Way over to the Krailshime Road and designate Clifton Avenue to extend the MSAS system from First Avenue on the north end up to Oxford Street. The Grand Avenue from First Avenue to Darling Drive, and then we'd go west over to Trunk Highway 59, Homestead Avenue, would be designated as a Trunk Highway, or I'm sorry, MSAS route once the Trunk Highway 59 reconstruction is completed. We were going to include it initially and stuff, but that could affect eligibility for the state paying for it or the city paying for it and some other costs and stuff. So we decided to wait till that's all worked out before we start designating a piece of a roadway that doesn't belong to us at this point. So at this point, we do have Exhibit 1 as a resolution requesting the Minnesota Department of Transportation to designate certain routes as the municipal state aid streets. And on the map and stuff, it shows the location of those. One of the routes would be Fox Farm Road would be from the Krailshime. We're using Fox Farm Road to go over to West Lake Avenue and then taking that around the west and north side of the lake there to get over to Thompson Avenue, where it's already designated as an MSAS route. And the other one would be Clifton Avenue from Dover Street going north to Oxford Street. Trunk Highway 59, so at this point. That one is considered a Trunk Highway turnback of the former Trunk Highway 5960 that was moved over as it came underneath the railroad tracks and went over to the roundabout. So those, that distance on that section of the roadway would not be part of our 2.22 miles of bank. We get that on top of our regular systems. That's additional mileage that we do get. And that then, where our route used to connect into 59 by taking a sharp right going east over to 59, now it follows the old Trunk Highway alignment and goes up to Oxford Street. So that one will be designated as a, we're waiting on that one primarily to get that designated as a municipal state aid street. So the resolution identifies those two routes at this point, which leaves us some additional mileage then to designate Grand Avenue and Darling Drive and going over toward Highway 59, that north Homestead area sometime in the near future.
Move to approve. Second.
Second, and any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Next one is City Council Business Committee Development. Case item, conditional use permit, 2385 Highway 60. I have to excuse myself. My employer, Ron's Repair.
All right, thank you. So yeah, as the mayor just said, this is a conditional use permit application for Ron's Repair at 2385 Highway 60 here. This request would allow for an approximately 150 by 182 expansion to the existing building. So pursuant to Minnesota statute and city code there, auto truck repair centers are permitted by conditional use permit only in the B3 general business district, which is the current zoning of the property. At its March 7th meeting, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the requested conditional use permit, subject to one condition, and that's to catch all the subject property must maintain compliance with all applicable local, state, and federal standards and requirements. The commission recommended that the applicant not be required to provide a six-foot-tall screening fence as required by City Code Section 9714, and recommended that the city remove that requirement from city code with the understanding that the screening may be required on a case-by-case basis through the conditional use permit process. That recommendation focused primarily on the elevation of the property and its surroundings. So for instance, the adjacent highway sits much higher, so a six-foot-tall screening fence isn't going to block anything. And if you go back, kind of where we built a bike trail last year between Sun Gold Heights and that, you'll see that the parking lot where they store trailers is actually built up in elevation with a retaining wall back there. But we'll come back to that one. So moving on, then you can see what their recommendation was based on. I'm going to touch on a few things. One, the conditional use permit requirement for automotive repair uses was implemented in 2020 across all zoning districts. That was a change. There's not a single zoning district now that you can operate a repair center by right. The applicant's business has been in operation long before that change and has been considered a grandfathered in use. And now to expand the business, they do need a conditional use permit. Moving on, another big one here, Ron's Repair was approved for variance in 2004 that allowed him relief of the requirement to hard surface all parking stalls and access drives. This variance was approved until such time the frontage road is curbed and gutted or it becomes a public road, whichever occurs first. To date, neither of this has occurred, so the variance is still valid and no hard surfacing will be required as a result of this expansion. Moving on, you can see just surrounding land uses and that stuff there. Since that time, so after the planning commission meeting, city staff did receive feedback from MINDOT on this application. As part of this application, they're requesting that the city require approximately 100 feet of curb to be installed along that frontage road, which would roughly follow kind of their right-of-way. It looks to us like they actually bought some more right-of-way when they redid the highway there. That area is shown in Exhibit 1E, so that area is about 100 foot long stretch there. MINDOT's requesting this to help tighten up access to Ron's Repair and push the access point further back from the highway intersection. They outlined three specific goals. One was reduction of conflicts between traffic entering and exiting Ron's Repair and northbound and southbound traffic there. Reduction of conflicts between trail users and traffic entering and exiting Ron's Repair. And allowing a greater amount of armored road, they're referring to it as armored road, that's that private frontage road there, to stack in and utilize the existing dedicated right and through slash left lanes at Highway 60. Now where this will get tricky, installation of a curb would nullify the existing variance, which provides relief from the hard surfacing requirement for the parking lot, meaning that if we require that he install curb, now the road's curbed and gutted, he'd have to pave his lot. An alternative option, should council wish to maintain the variance, is to require fencing, landscaping, or some other type of traffic obstruction along that area instead of a curb. The DOT has indicated that they would also be happy with this, as well as pretty much anything that would help push the site access further back. Unfortunately, these comments were not received until after the planning commission meeting, so I do not have a recommendation from them on this particular issue. And I will mention, I did talk to the applicant about this. Unfortunately, he could not be here tonight. He was not in favor of this and cited a few different concerns with that. One is that it was going to mess up traffic flow through his parking lot. He explained to me that he receives a lot of overflow truck parking from the gas station right across from him as well, and they often utilize kind of that half of the parking lot to park and turn around and everything. He also cited snow removal as a concern there. And now he's got, you know, less of a straight shot there to just kind of push everything through there. Other than that, he kind of discussed the fact that it's kind of been that way for a long time, that it is a private road. It's not really a public road at that point. So, you know, he doesn't see any issue with that. But should council wish to kind of concur with MINDOT, you could add a recommendation one way or another on this. So with that, council is requested to consider approval or denial of the application.
As far as the addition itself, I don't have any problem not having the screening there because when you look at the pictures, it looks like it's already, I mean, there's a fence there now. It's not screened as it is. And if anything, the building would probably improve what the neighbors there see on the property without having all of the different semis there. So I don't, I don't have any problem with that.
And I will note, I should say, a conditional use permit is not a variance. So if we do approve this this way, we need to follow it up with an ordinance change one way or another on that fencing requirement then.
Okay, for all future. Okay, gotcha.
And also have note on that, I think there's only one business that actually provided screening after that ordinance was enacted.
What year was that enacted?
2020.
Thank you.
My opinion, the hard part about this is, one, the planning commission didn't get a hear either way about that little chunk that, I guess I understand both sides of it. And there wasn't a chance for, you had a discussion with Ron. I get that. That was thrown on him probably just prior to the discussion. So to formulate thoughts, ideas and stuff, I mean, he came up with a number that I would say, yeah, I can see points on that. And I guess a real good argument is, boy, we've been operating like this for how long? And now all of a sudden, there's a request for change. And I get that. So the hard part of this is, he wants a decision so he can start with the project. If that needs to be part of the discussion, that's asking a lot of us to do that without a whole lot of understanding of the situation.
Now, you could table it. You could send it back to Planning Commission. You know, in the meantime, they can continue to work on their civil and architectural plans. I don't think they're going to start digging this month here yet, so you do have some time on that if, you know, if that's something that you need to do.
Matt, given that the next regularly scheduled planning commission is not until April 4th, if council wanted to push this back to a final decision on the next regular city council meeting, which is March 27th? Can you schedule a special planning commission meeting to take this up in the next week?
Yeah, we can certainly try to.
If council would prefer to have more time to, for both the planning commission and the owner to at least consider and digest the latecoming requests from MINDOT?
I know I would feel more comfortable with that as well, hearing what the planning commission would have to say. And then, you know, maybe by that time, the owner of Ron's Repair has time to maybe get an estimate as to what that would look like for them. Because just saying, hey, you're going to, you might need to do this and having a big question mark, I can see that, why that would be a concern for them as well.
And I will say this, too. I've dealt with MINDOT on a number of different projects as a councilman and stuff like that. We'll see the actual concern of MINDOT on this as well. And that can say a lot of things, that they like this or wish that this happened or that. Does it really? Or is it just so they saying, whoa, we should, you know, I wish my ice cream cones came with sprinkles, but it doesn't always happen, you know? Find out what it's really worth to them, too. And why? Why has it been okay for so long? But now, something different. So if that works, I would, I would appreciate that.
Council could put this aside until March 27th. If you prefer to do that.
Before we hit that point, maybe we go back to the screening requirement then, or is there a direction to take going forward with this?
So what is it right now? Is it just for repair shops or what is this screening?
Yeah, it's for auto repair shops. Basically, you're supposed to screen any inoperable vehicles, of which you're only allowed six by city code.
All of that was put in in 2020?
Yep.
Is there evidence of inoperable vehicles?
On site?
On site?
Yeah, I would say so.
His comments during the planning commission meeting were that we will, we would see, his intent, according to him, was that we would see some of those, some of that disappear into the new facility, facility as storage in a, in a storage area, part of that, that building, proposed building. But that was, I mean, if that was what you took of it, Ron's comments at the meeting, but.
Yeah, I mean, I would say if you go out there and you walk the trail around it and you start counting, you're going to be pretty far over six pretty quick. You know, there's even a couple racks of fuel tanks and stuff in that yard. A facility that size, to keep that to six is, I wouldn't want to be in charge of that.
Correct. And I think that's even the case with some of our just auto mechanic shops to some extent. But when they be, you know, our intent on that was when they start to become a salvage yard, there's a difference between that has a lot of usable parts for a lot of vehicles we work on and we utilize that opposed to that person dumped it here and we've never moved it. That's kind of the, there is a very distinct difference of what some of the issues of why that was created opposed to whatever. The problem is, if we aren't enforcing it, then what the heck do we have the ordinance for? But if it needs to be for vehicles that aren't insured, aren't ever going to be repaired and are just there because the owner says someone dumped it or they haven't taken any time care or concern to pick something up, throw it on a trailer, take it to Shine's, then why are we letting them just stack up vehicles in town?
And how many other businesses have we had? On, how many other businesses have we had start up in the last three years since two thousand twenty, since the, since it was approved as a, that the screening was mandated?
There's one, it wasn't a new one. It was one that was moving. That was a conditional use permit for eighty-eight and a half East Twelfth Street, right over by the railroad tracks here, which they're still not in there operating yet. So, we've been seeing all of that screening, and they're slowly renovating that building. But we did require it on that one. That was partly because of that, but also partly to help ease some concerns with some of the neighboring properties as well. So, that one had kind of a dual benefit there.
So, or, I mean, my point being that the ordinance hasn't really, it's still young. It's only three years old, but we haven't been able to see its entire effect. This case is different, I think, in, given the, the location and the, and the type of business it is. It's, having it with the blanket coverage of, of what that ordinance is, is maybe not more, the, maybe not favorable, but in, in what it is. But it's certainly, I don't think, maybe something that we want to take off the books quite yet.
On that note, you know, if that's the goal, I think that would almost be better left up to the conditional use permit process. Because they are required now, so if any of these existing repair shops want to expand, such as this one, now they got to come back, and then you can say, okay, at this point now, do they need screening? Because I think what we ran into on problems with that one was that we're going to try to make everybody retroactively put in the screening, which is very tough to do. You know, so if you leave the ordinance as is, that's still technically the requirement. You know, even though, quite frankly, there are probably some that you almost don't want screening because they're located downtown and it's going to look terrible. So, if you leave it, if you take that out, but you still leave that land use as conditional use permit only across all zoning districts, you do have that opportunity over time as they, you know, change properties, as they expand, as they do whatever. And then you can kind of address this slowly over time through that.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, and this one, I don't, this one, I don't think is an abuse case by any means. I think it's semi-pointless because you could put up a six-foot screen and you're still going to see everything.
And the building's going to screen.
Well, just the nature of the equipment that they work on. It's bigger than six foot. Hello? Hey, you covered the wheels. Hey, you know, that is, I guess that didn't meet the objective of it at all, so. There's mud, right, Matt?
Yeah. So, you can table this then. I'll try to get a special planning commission meeting scheduled, and then I'll also bring back an ordinance change for that screening requirement to kind of go alongside it.
I would move to table this under the condition that a planning and zoning commission meeting happened prior to the council meeting on March twenty-seventh.
A second.
Okay, you have a motion seconded? Also on favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
That's all under the condition that they have the planning meeting. Because if they don't, then they don't want to grow up on the twenty-seventh. Because when you table it, you got to...
Your motion covered that.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'll cover this, that will now to council committee reports.
I have nothing.
No report.
For the HRA, we have our duplex project out for bid on Cecily Street right now. We're still trying to see if it's economically feasible to build a duplex on Cecily on one of the two lots that we purchased. I believe that that, I believe it's like noon on Thursday, I think, or sometime on Thursday is when that ends. And we've been told that there has been some local interest, as well as some interest from further away for potential builders on that project. So, that is what we've been working on for the better part of probably a year and a half now. We had a Prairie Justice Center joint power, or joint meeting, and we've been continuing to discuss the impound vehicle storage. And so, we are likely going to be bringing a request to council soon for the construction of a cold storage garage or building. Right now, they're trying to see what size makes the most sense to try to get all of these impound vehicles, the ones that need to be stored for evidentiary value or just for the value of the vehicles themselves. We're trying to see what size that building should be so that we're not overbuilding it and overspending as a result of that. And then we would bring that forward to our board, and then the county commissioners would bring that to their board meeting as well to see if we can get funding for that project. Memorial Auditorium has a show this weekend, Pirates of Penzance, and that is Saturday at seven P.M. And there are still tickets available. So, if anyone's interested in going to that show, they can go to the box office or go online to buy tickets. And then for the YMCA, we had the cruise dinner this past weekend. And from the comments that I've heard, and I was there as well, I've heard some of the best food that they have ever had, one of the best bands that they've ever had. It was a really great event, and a lot of people came to show their support for the strong communities and for the YMCA. That's all.
Elena pretty much covered what I had, so that, thank you. Let's talk. I would say the winner of the cruise dinner was a little sketchy, but...
Just that, this past Friday, we, I was appointed to that Legislative Salary Council. We had our, what proved to be our last meeting on Friday, and it came to an agreement on salary adjustments for our state legislators. And we will convene in about February of twenty twenty-five for our next meeting. So, we're done for two years. So, that's all I have to report.